Everyone, welcome to the June 24, 2019 council meeting. If we could please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Lorraine, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Here.
Mr. Flynn?
Here.
Mr. Schlafer?
Here.
Mayor LaFois?
Here. We all received the June 10, 2019, regular meeting minutes. Do we have any additional corrections, amendments, solutions, changes, other than that's already been submitted?
No.
All right, seen that, I'll entertain a motion on the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 10, 2019, regular meeting.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilwoman Diglio and a second by Deputy Mayor Flynn for the June 10 regular meeting minutes. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Schlafer?
Excuse me, myself, due to my absence.
Mayor LaFois?
Yes. At this point in the meeting, the town council welcomes comments from any member of the public on any topic to help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard. Speakers asked to take one turn of the microphone, and please limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will keep time. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy and email a copy to the clerk's office after making your comments, so it may be properly reflected in the minutes. Do we have any public comment at this time? None? You have another opportunity at the end of the meeting, all right? So, we have two presentations tonight. We're happy to have Paul Rummerfield and members of the Newton Housing Authority here to make a presentation, give us an update and what's going on, so why don't you, yep, come on up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And if you'll introduce yourself and then also who's here with you tonight, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to attend the board meeting and give you a little update on what's happening at Newton. And I prepared a little bit, because my friends will tell you, I'll tend to ramble on a little bit, so I'll try to stay on one point and just not waste too much of your time. But with us this evening is Commissioners Rick Batondo, Rick Tardo, that you met, I think, a couple weeks ago?
Yes.
And Bill Nannery, the Commissioners of the Newton Housing Authority. And also with me is Kevin D. Drolamo. He's one of our property managers in Phillipsburg, and he also puts a lot of time in at Newton. So, Mayor, council people, Mr. Manager, again, thank you for the opportunity to discuss and update where we're at with Newton and how we got here, and answer any questions that you may have. So, the Newton Housing Authority, better known as Liberty Towers to the locals, is a five-story high-rise for the elderly and disabled residents, with rents subsidized by the federal government through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. It is comprised of 80 units, of which 48 are studio apartments, and 32 are one-bedroom residents, or one-bedroom. Residents must be 62 years or older, or 55 on social security disability. There are certain qualifications to be a tenant, one of which is income. HUD's current maximum limit for income is $52,850 for one person, or $60,400 for two people. That's the maximum that you can have as income, and can go all the way down to zero, obviously. Then, once in, a tenant pays 30 percent of their adjusted gross income after certain deductions. And for the elderly, most of the deductions would be medical deductions. There's also a local preference for applicants from Sussex County. The town of Newton established the housing authority through a local ordinance on April 14, 1969, and the town issued a certificate of occupancy to the housing authority on September 11, 1974. We are governed by seven Commissioners, six appointed by the mayor and council, and one by the governor through the Department of Community Affairs. They're for five-year terms, and once appointed, you have 18 months to take five classes that DCA prescribes in order to stay on the housing authority. If you fail to take the five classes, the law says you have effectively resigned your position. The housing authority is exempt from local property taxes, but we make an annual pilot payment every year. And pilot stands for payment in lieu of taxes. And on October 18, the housing authority cut a check to the town of Newton for $31,048.75. So, how did Phillipsburg Housing Authority get involved with Newton? It really has come about because of financial necessity. And Newton's not too unlike other housing authorities in New Jersey. So, let me share some numbers of exactly how we got here. And I think this will bring to light the financial constraints of small housing authorities in New Jersey. The end of the fiscal year for 2016, the Newton Housing Authority had a deficit of The end of the fiscal year for 2017, the deficit increased by $61,005, which was a 50 percent increase from the previous year, and they operated a deficit that year of So, you can see where we're going with this, and what would happen to the housing authority if they continued on track. Now, I want to make this very important, this is a very important observation. This is not through the fault of previous administrators, or Commissioners, or staff. It's simply stated, HUD has not kept pace financially to allow smaller housing authorities to exist. So, what's going on in Newton with Phillipsburg is becoming commonplace through New Jersey anyway with smaller housing authorities. Perth Amboy, the director there, actually runs three other housing authorities in addition to Perth Amboy. I know he does Atlantic Highlands, Keansburg, and I'm not sure of the fourth one. Millville, the director there is running three. I know one's Wildwood, and I'm not sure of the other two. Cliffside Park does Edgewater Park, and West New York is also running another housing authority. So, for this year, the HUD subsidy that the Newton Housing Authority will be receiving is $132,000. We'll also receive in capital expenses $85,000. The total revenues for the Newton Housing Authority this year, we've budgeted for $630,650. So, you can see what HUD gives you in terms of the operating subsidy of $132,000 falls quite short on what it's actually going to cost to run. So, we're very dependent on tenant rents, which right now we've budgeted for $430,000. We do have a cell tower right now, and some laundry machines. We've anticipated income coming from those two at $43,000, and we charge the tenants excess utilities for air conditions. So, we've budgeted $25,000 in excess utilities, which brings us up to that $630,000 in revenue. So, when you deduct salaries, benefits, maintenance costs, utilities, insurance, and all other costs associated with running a business, it doesn't leave much. So, some type of assistance was needed, with not many options that were on the table. Now, one of the options, I guess, is the housing authority could have been dissolved, but HUD would have been hard-pressed to allow Newton to leave that happen, especially the need of affordable housing, not only in New Jersey, but the rest of the country. So, the burden is really thrown on the local housing authority. How are you going to resolve the problem? How are you going to stay fiscally solvent? And, you know, let us know how you're going to do it, because we're not going to bail you out financially. And as I said, HUD just has not kept pace with the current cost. So, a shared service was a logical path. In talking to the Commissioners and my staff, I don't like to call it a shared service, I'd rather call it a partnership, and I think that's what we're in. We're in a partnership because you and Newton still maintain control over Liberty Towers. So, even though Phillipsburg is in, we're providing assistance, the town of Newton still controls the Newton Housing Authority through the Commissioners that you appoint. So, let me share some numbers on why this is a fiscally sound situation with Phillipsburg and Newton. So, this is what we've decreased the Newton budget this year. Salaries and wages were decreased by $122,500, which is a 100 percent reduction. Benefits, $55,000. Staff training, $5,000. Travel, $3,750. Tenant service salaries, $10,000. Maintenance salaries, $32,000. Utility labor, $32,000. Fringe benefits, $1,000. These have all been reduced by 100 percent. And then, the cost of providing services, because of the categories I just mentioned, is a reduction in the budget of $48,347, and that was a reduction of 12.9 percent. So, in total, by having Phillipsburg coming in doing shared service with Newton, we've been able to reduce the Newton budget, the housing authority budget, by $309,597 in this fiscal year. Now, what we did, we increased the administration expenses, and that went up 580 percent. And that was an increase of $165,500. But that's the total amount that Newton Housing Authority is giving to us. So, seems like a lot when you say almost 600 percent. And what that represents, it represents $174,000 a year to the Phillipsburg Housing Authority to run the Newton Housing Authority in terms of administration, maintenance, and everything that was, I had said was reduced.
Maintenance minus capital expenses, just like minor maintenance?
Yeah. Capital, we'll be talking to the Commissioners. Some of the things that we've talked to the Commissioners about in terms of capital is, right now, they have window units. We're talking about putting sleeves in there. In the past, the Newton residents paid to have their air conditions installed and pulled out at the end of the season. I'm sending our maintenance crew up now. We're putting them in and taking them out at no charge to the tenants right now. But what we're looking at possibly doing through a capital expense is putting in sleeves, so once you put the air-condition unit in, and it stays in there, we'll winterize it. So, just have to be put in at one time. One of the other things that we're talking about doing, and I'm going to have to talk to Newton about this, because I understand there's easements coming through our parking lot for sewer or something, or some utilities.
Drainage, yeah.
Drainage, yeah. So, the concrete, the macadam, everything is in bad shape, the curbing. So, that's something else that we want to address over there. But there are a couple of the capital items we're taking a look at. There's a lot more that has to be done with the building. Again, because of finances, a lot of things have just been ignored, not intentionally, but because there's no money. In the past, were some issues with regulating heat. I had my crew coming up this year. I have a number of black seal boiler licenses on my staff, and they were able to adjust the heat, so it didn't keep knocking off, and there wasn't variances in temperature this year. But I'll get into a little bit what we plan on doing with capital in just a second. So, by taking these amounts out of the equation, out of the Newton budget, also factoring in what Phillipsburg is being compensated, just off the bat, we're saving the $135,597. We've also been able to institute some cost savings by going reverse auction for our gas and electric, which could actually benefit Newton, because the pilot, the way it's configured, has to do with rents and vacancies and utility expenses. So, if we could save money on our utility expenses, actually, the amount of pilot may be going up. And I know in Phillipsburg, before I became the director, I think we were averaging to the town of Phillipsburg about $82,000 to $90,000 a year in pilot. Recently, we've been giving the town of Phillipsburg about $140,000 annually in a payment in lieu of taxes. Obviously, those numbers won't be as big up here, because we're just not as big. But we plan on putting some cost savings into effect at Newton. Honestly, we're still trying to feel our way around a little bit. It's been a year, but we're getting a better feel for the building itself and things that have to be addressed. So, moving forward, this isn't going to get better with HUD. They're still not going to continue to give us the money, even with the shared service that it's going to cost to run and maintain Liberty Towers the way it should be, in the way that, you know, you would want it to be. So, Liberty Towers is what's called a Section 9 program from HUD. I don't know whether you're familiar with Section 9. I think everyone knows what Section 8 is, because that tends to garner more publicity. But we're a Section 9. We're very limited. We can't go out, we can't borrow money, we can't finance it, we can't take a loan out, we can't use the capital money to borrow money like a mortgage. So, there's a program that HUD came out with that has been supported by Congress. It was a demonstration project, it's called RAD. It's a rental assistance demonstration project. I applied for it in Phillipsburg, we were placed on a waiting list, and we were successful in getting a RAD designation. When I had first talked with the Commissioners at Newton, I said, "Listen, if I come up here, this is going to be one of my priorities. I want you to support a RAD application." So, what a RAD application does, and we were placed on the waiting list, and we were actually approved for RAD for Newton also. What happens, you're going to be converting from a Section 9 program to a tenant-based Section 8 program, where vouchers are included. So, what that actually does, because the feds and Congress, HUD, is giving more money to housing authorities under a RAD program. We're actually going to be able to increase the rents, we're going to be able to bring in more money from the feds. The tenants will still only pay 30 percent of their gross adjusted income, but the Newton Housing Authority will experience, you know, influx of cash, which will also allow us, if need be, we could look at low-income tax credit to do a few things. We could possibly borrow money and then use some of that money to pay off a mortgage, where under a Section 9 program, you can't do. Because there are issues with the infrastructure and things at Liberty Towers that, like I said, just haven't been addressed through the years because of lack of funds. So, we're in the midst of looking at converting to a RAD project, but something that the feds and Congress has come up with since then, which may make it, and I'd like to come back at some point in time to explain what the RAD is and what we plan on doing with RAD. Right now, it's a little premature, because we haven't really begun, we started the process. We've hired an attorney, we've hired a financial advisor, and we hired an independent engineering firm to come in and do a needs assessment. They haven't even started the needs assessment yet. So, we're really at the beginning of RAD. But what's coming out since then, which even cuts more red tape for a housing authority, it's called a streamlined voluntary conversion, which I think may be even a better opportunity for the Newton Housing Authority to convert public housing to tenant-based assistance. And it's only for small housing authorities with 250 or less units. And having only 80, it allows us to do a voluntary conversion. So, we're looking at that. So, moving forward, we're looking at generating more income, more funds for the Newton Housing Authority. Like I say, it will not affect the tenant's rent, they'll still pay the 30 percent of their gross adjusted income, but it allows the housing authority now to make improvements to Liberty Towers that they were unable to do in the past. So, that's moving forward, and like I said, I'd like to come back at some point to brief the mayor, deputy mayor, council, clerk, and manager on the progress with that. I think it's pretty exciting on what we could possibly to do over there, and really improve, you know, the safety, health, and well-being of our residents. So, I think you're, I had a brief conversation with your attorney at one point. She said, "Jeez, what could Newton do for us?" And I said, "You could waive the pilot," but tongue-in-cheek. I didn't get a response from her, so I'm sure she didn't take it. But we'd like to, you know, we want to be a good neighbor, we want to work with the council, obviously. So, if there are any questions that I might be able to address this evening for you?
I do have some questions.
Okay.
So, first of all, thank you very much for the presentation. Certainly, thank you very much to the Commissioners for the work that you're doing. I know that we've recently just restaffed a little bit so that you could continue to do business, but it's very much been a transition year. So, we certainly appreciate the partnership with the Phillipsburg Housing Authority and Paul and your team coming in and assisting us at a pretty critical time. So, just a couple of follow-up questions, if I may. How have the residents been reacting and been responsive with new management? You know, there was, there were certain personnel that were there for a very long time and had deep relationships, and so I'm wondering how the transition's been. What I hear is kind of when I'm walking on the block, and it kind of depends on the mood of the person that I'm interacting with, right?
From my perspective, what I've heard, and relaying some from my maintenance personnel, because I think the rumor had gotten out there, because there was a little bit of a period where there was no one there. And Maria had called me the chairwoman, and she was frantic, and, you know, they had no one, it was the Commissioners trying to run it, and I said, "Just calm down." I said, "It's not rocket science, we'll get up there." I think they had a couple of units that were, need to be turned over. You know, I was asking her questions that she didn't have any answer for. I said, "Listen, we'll go up, and we'll figure it out, you know, we'll get you, you know, moving in the right direction until you decide what you want." So, we were there for maybe a month or so, and then the Commissioner said, "Jeez, would you think about a shared service?" And I said, "Well, we'll think about it, and I'll take it back to my board and see." So, that's kind of how it evolved, but my, so I think the tenants were afraid that they were going to lose their home, I think, from what I hear. So, I think from my perspective, they were happy when we came, they certainly seemed that way. And I can tell you, one of my maintenance men were in the elevator one day, and this woman, she started crying, and she said, "Thank you, thank you for coming up." So, from the reaction from the tenants to my maintenance staff, because I think things, a few things were going, not intentionally, not addressed, but I think we're on top of things. We put a work order system in before they filled out on a piece of paper, and it went in. You know, now we're putting everything in the computer. We switched the software over to PHA Web, so I think we have a better handle on not only work orders, but things that have to be done. So, I'm a little frustrated, because the outside is not up to my standards yet, and we came on board late last year, and then I've had some transitional issues in Phillipsburg with maintenance men. So, we just went out for a landscaping contract, and no one did it. So, I think we're going out again. So, I know we want to fix up the outside in addition to the inside, and part of that is the, you know, the paving and everything else. So, from what I've seen, and from what I've been told, the residents, I think, are happy that we're there, addressing their needs.
Okay. And what's the average age of the residents that are there now? It's been a couple of years since I've...
I don't know. Over 62. I, you know, I don't know the average age, I'm sorry.
Okay. And how often is there an opening? We oftentimes will hear, you know, "There's a waiting list," or there's, you know, "How do you get on the waiting list?" And those types of questions that will come to us.
Well, the, right now, so we have 80 units. Right now, we're in one, 5W, we're getting ready to turn that over, so I'm hoping that we can have that turned over and re-rented before the end of, well, in July, anyway. 3H is empty, and we're not in there yet in the maintenance, and then two others just left, and we haven't even taken them over yet. They're still within that 30-day period. But there is a waiting list, it's not long. PHA Web is internet-based software. The waiting list is open, so if someone wants to submit an application, they put it in, we'll review it to see if they qualify and move from there.
So, that leads me then into some questions that I have in follow-up to the conversion from Section 8 to Section 9, tenant-based assistance and housing vouchers. So, it's been my experience through HUD contracts, an organization that I work for, it's very different, not senior housing, but the vouchers do not become available very often, and they're not necessarily controlled locally, should I say, right? So, we get notification that a housing voucher might come up, they go very quick, there's waiting lists for them. How does a housing voucher in a...
Tenant-based.
Right. How does that differ perhaps than a traditional housing, section, a housing voucher program?
A tenant from, once the vouchers are issued, I think what RAD will allow a tenant to take that voucher and move. But it's going to be tenant-based, so it's not like we're going to take a voucher and place them on, you know, a street in Newton. This is all tenant-based. The only vouchers that we're going to be dealing with are the 80 that are in Liberty Towers. But HUD will allow a tenant, if they come in and have a tenant-based Section 8 voucher, I think after the first year, they will allow that tenant to pick up and move to South Carolina if they want, or anywhere.
So, the 80 vouchers will always remain with the housing authority, and so it's almost seamless in terms of the way that they transition?
Yeah. And the qualifications are pretty much the same.
That was my next question. How are our current income qualifications versus...
I'm not sure what the Section 8 is, but it's pretty much the same. All the qualifications, you know, criminal, income...
Income level specifically is what I'm referring to? I just don't want all of a sudden there to be some difference, and then some of our residents are...
I'll tell you what, you won't see any difference, the residents won't see any difference. No one's really going to know that it's a Section 8 rather than a Section 9 program.
So, the filings or whatever paperwork that needs to be done, the paperwork that they have to turn in...
The tenant, the tenants are still going to be required to substantiate through pay income if they have it, insurance policy, savings, any other assets they may have. Those requirements are still going to be the same. But it's going to be less bureaucratic red tape for us to run it. Some of the inspections, you know, the REACT inspections aren't going to be required. Some of the other things that HUD currently has for a Section 9 program are not required under the Section 8 program.
And so, then, the potential, I think you mentioned that under the new designation, there would be the potential to do some of the capital improvements that you see come down the line because of some funding opportunities?
The only reason for us to go to a RAD or this conversion is for financial reasons, to be honest with you.
So, did you also say that you have your team looking at some immediate capital needs, and then kind of coming together and put together a capital plan of sorts?
Correct. Well, we're required to submit a capital plan, a five-year and an annual plan to HUD every year. And I've yet to talk to the Commissioners, because we've really been trying to get up and running this first year in terms of operating, setting up work orders and things like that. So, we'll be having conversations, and some of the things that we've talked about are possibly the sleeves under capital program, and addressing some of the sidewalks and paving issues. And I think Commissioner Nannery is the one that informed me that there is an easement that goes through the property, so I'm going to have to find out what's going on with that.
Good, thank you. Some other questions?
I mean, looking at it from the outside, I feel like it's, it seems like a common-sense transition. You guys are experienced in running this type of operation, and that's really what it comes down to, to, you know, to train somebody to do it and to manage it yourself. It just doesn't seem really feasible in this, you know, climate that we're in. So, I mean, from what I could see, you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. I know the previous director did voluntarily take a reduction to try to make the place a little bit more solvent, but, you know, it just wasn't going to happen. I think she saw the handwriting on the wall. I mean, we're going deeper and deeper into debt.
Yeah.
So, I really think that, you know, while there may be a couple of options, this was the best option for Newton. I think it'll work out. Like I say, I view it more as a partnership than a shared service.
Yeah, for sure. And it seems to be the trend, I think, as you mentioned, with the smaller housing authorities.
Yep.
No, it sounds like it's got everything laid out perfectly.
Yeah, no, thank you. I didn't keep your comment on explaining everything.
Any other, comments from any of the other commissioners? Any additional?
Well, in response to your question about the atmosphere at Liberty Towers, I kind of started when things were becoming very chaotic. And there were months where there was a lot of dissension, a lot of discontentment voiced, you know, during, during meetings. And when I look at where we were, you know, a year and a half ago versus where we are today, in terms of the way the residents are reacting to their living conditions, you know, their concern for their future, I think they're much happier. And I see certainly, you know, their health, safety, and well-being is much improved from what it was, you know, a year and a half ago when I came on board as a commissioner. And, you know, how can you guys help? We're still two commissioners short. So we'd like to be able to operate with a full board. Fortunately, you expedited the appointment of Rick, so now we can, you know, hold meetings and conduct business and keep things rolling. And I guess the other question, other way I think that you may be able to help us other than, you know, what's underneath the ground would be maybe short-term help on a contracted basis with, you know, some more landscaping services under DPW, at least in the interim, until we're able to lock on to a landscaping contractor.
Why do you think there, nobody responded back to the...
We, we did go back out for the, another RFP, and I believe we have one definitely setting something in. So hopefully, this time around, we'll have at least one in, and we can award it.
Do you think it was scope of work? It was price? It was...
We don't know what the price would have been.
It's happened in the past when we went out, even, you know, Phillipsburg, sometimes. It's hard to compare it, so. It's hard to compare what the scope would, the cost would have been.
Yeah, I, I was hoping to do a little bit more of the landscaping with some of my staff, but all of a sudden, what, two guys retired, one, I mean, it was crazy. I had a turnover. So we're just in the midst of bringing some people on board in Phillipsburg, so hopefully it's just more of a, you know, a, a situation where I need somebody now to get the place, you know, looking a little bit better.
And Rick, you know, we certainly appreciate your comments. The two vacancies, so this is probably the hardest commission to fill for us in terms of volunteers, and, and it's because of that heavy requirement in the beginning, right? You know, it's, it's the five classes that are five Saturdays, and I mean, there's a lot that is required of the commissioners and that upfront training capacity. So we continue to advertise, you know, for volunteers.
Can we extend beyond the town of Newton?
Right, and I think, or we've already looked into that.
Yep.
Right.
I mean, our plan is to do some marketing, get the word out there that the position is available. Because right now, I mean, the, the commitment is substantially greater than an average volunteer is willing to, to give.
Just don't tell them about that in the beginning.
We have 18 months. Now, I don't want to staff, because as I said, you know, Newton still controls that, but if you're stuck for anyone, I still have a couple of other people that I could suggest on an interim, so to help you out.
We really should try internally to, you know, groom our own volunteers, but it's a tough one.
It's tough. We've had commissioners in Phillipsburg that did the 18 months and had to step down because they just, they couldn't fit in the classes. I mean, it's, it's, it's a commitment, so. Kevin just reminded me, so one of the other things that's coming up here that I think that we were falling short on was cleaning inside. So what we ended up doing, we brought in through Sussex Arc. Sussex Arc comes in twice a week with four or five different people, and they come in and they do some basic cleaning of the common areas. And that was very well received by the tenants, because even more important or more critical than the work orders, because sometimes they're hit and miss, it needed to be cleaned every week. So twice a week, they're coming in right now, so that was, that was a big help. The tenants really appreciated that.
Oh, that's good, and that's a, a good, you know, utilization of the other organizations that are in town to, to kind of partner in terms of services. I mean, it's been my experience with the residents there that for many of them, to ease those fears of the unknown is that constant communication, you know? And many of them want to just kind of stay in their apartments and know that everything's okay, and then many want to come down to the community room, and they want to, you know, meet and congregate and talk about the good and other things that may be less desirable. So, you know, the constant communication with them about what's going on and knowing that their safety and welfare and well-being is, is most important.
You know, in Phillipsburg, when we have our monthly meetings, I don't think we ever get a tenant there. Very rarely do we get a tenant. So the first meeting, I come up, and the room is like packed with tenants. I'm going, oh my God, what did I walk into? But they take a very active interest and role in, in their building, and they should.
For sure. I mean, when we, just, you know, a couple of times a year, we do senior luncheons, and many of them come over, and we hear a lot about what's, you know, going on and what's, you know, what they love and their wish list of items, too. So I think, again, for the residents that are there, they just want to know what's going on. I used to live right across the street, and they were also the best house watchers. Always knew what was going on in the neighborhood, so. They, they're residents that are dedicated to their town. They like to be there, and, you know, we want to keep them happy as well. So we certainly appreciate the check-in and the work that, that you all have been doing for the last year or so, and certainly the partnership. And we continue to want to hear from you, particularly as you assess the physical needs and any other, you know, kind of social needs that exist as well, right? So like Phillipsburg, I think one of the benefits of, you know, being, having the Housing Authority in the county seat is that there are a lot of additional support services, I think, in the area that many of the residents there take advantage of, but then also, might not also be aware of, right? So any kind of continued partnerships and collaborations with additional resources in the municipality, I think, would be important as well. Any other questions, Mr. Russo? Anything we've missed in this discussion? Okay. Any other questions for us?
All right, and I'd like to come back as we get in this RAD or voluntary conversion.
Yeah, please do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the input.
Thanks very much. Thank you. Good night. All right, our second presentation tonight is Suburban Consulting Engineers and some of our town hall's finest to tell us what's going on with the Babe Ruth Field, the engineering analysis. And I believe you sent us some documents beforehand. Everybody has those up?
Yes, hot off the press, so to speak. Good evening, Council. My name's John Chakal. I'm with Suburban Consulting Engineers. We performed drainage assessment of this site. I'll give you a little background of, I'm a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey. I'm also certified floodplain manager. I served as department head for our municipal group at Suburban. And also very interested in baseball. I have two sons, age 12 and 14, which I coach, coach youth baseball for, so this has been a very interesting project for me to oversee. So you have the report. I'll kind of give you a, kind of a little background, walk you through it a bit, and we have some images, too, I think will help in the presentation. So the site in question, the Babe Ruth Field, is tax map, tax map block 10.01, Lot 1, located in Memory Park. Original date of this field being established is, is unknown, yet we know from historical mapping, it was around in the '30s. We know from the implications of Babe Ruth supposedly being on this site that, you know, dates back earlier, perhaps, in that, when he was around. So what we looked at with this project are the main drainage components for any site, and which would be...
You want the other one, John?
Uh, no, this is good. This is good. Well, I'll talk a little before, before we get to this, but the, the conditions of this site, which we looked at regards, in regards to the groundwater, the drainage, the infiltration, the rate the water can absorb into the ground. It's a topographic grading, the slope of, of the terrain, the infrastructure, the piping network that's aiding the drainage of the site, and also any environmental constraints, its location in relationship to freshwater wetlands, the floodplain, the floodway. This site has a lot going on, as you probably all know. It is in the floodplain. The entire site is comprised within the floodway. There are mapped wetlands associated with Moore's Brook to the rear of the site. And what we ended up doing was to measure the groundwater and to assess the soil, we recorded samples, took samples at the, at six different locations. We set pismeters to measure the groundwater. Kind of, if you went around, then we set one kind of your home plate. Tom, if you want to go back to the, the topographic map before we get into the network. And if you could just flip that image counterclockwise. Oh, that's fine. That's fine. That's fine, but we...
Tell me where you want to go, and I'll, I'll go.
Okay. Uh, but stay right in the middle. So you can see in darker these areas, if I get up. I'm sure you see highlighted six locations that we set pismeters, which are rods in the ground, measures the groundwater levels. We conducted seven different readings. This is taking us from April through to just last week, just to measure, see where we are. We suspected there would be a seasonal change, in which we did see the last reading last week showed a slight drop, but the groundwater levels are very high on this site, within a half a foot to two feet plus or minus at some of these various locations. We wanted to set in the outfield area specifically, where we understand the site has experienced most of its problems. And we can see from the survey, which we performed back in April, that the slope of this site, which ideally would go from home plate towards Moore's Brook in a perfect scenario, doesn't really make it there. It's very flat. It kind of works its way slowly towards the outfield, towards the right field, and it kind of makes its way more towards left field, again, at a very, very flat slope gradient. So all these things with the high groundwater that we've seen, with the existing slope conditions, and also, we, we took samples at the three outfield areas of the soils, set it out for testing to confirm what we could see in the field. There was a very high clay content in this soil. It has a K1 soil classification for permeability, which means it drains according to a K1 status. It would be .2 to .6 inches per hour. It's very slow-draining soil. We then looked at the, the drainage network. Where, where does this water go on this site? Well, there's several inlets, and Tom, if you can go back to the previous image you So there's a series of inlets, we'll call it within the, the ball field, which is off of a field, third base side, that drains towards the Brook area. This system collects drainage from the parking lot. It collects drainage from Moran Street, and it continues to collect upper drainage from the ball field just above Moran Field, Moran Street. So it's got quite a substantial area coming down. What we experienced and what we witnessed very early on was the, the field inlet, kind of off of third base there, the one furthest to your right on that image, is surcharged, meaning it's, it's full of water. And we noticed that the first time we're out, went out the second time, weren't able to see what was causing this. We then had the support of DPW staff. We went and we tried to de-water this by pumping, but the capacity was too big. We then used an excavator to dig around the structure. What we were trying to find out is where this pipe, what comes into this, to what depth, so we could measure that invert, the pipe elevation, to see the orientation of where it was going, and to confirm, see if we could find the outfall. We could not find this outfall. When we excavated around the structure, we saw that there is an eight-inch pipe coming in from, from the field side. And then we saw a 15-inch pipe leaving towards the Moore's Brook area. We then, with the help of the DPW staff, followed that out. Just beyond, there's an isolated fence at that location, dug down in that area and did locate it, but it is buried several feet down. So in essence, you know, we have a cork in the system here right now. All this piping network, all this stormwater that is able to be drained is going nowhere at the present time. Now, at one time, there was a channel beyond that outfall location. It shows up on the DEP's Geo website, which we included a map in the report. So there was a defined channel at one point, which was maintained, as we understand, by the staff. This, this is many years ago, though. It's no longer being maintained. It is silted up. There's really no evidence of it right now. But that is how this area, it used to drain. So we're, we've got quite, we've got a stacked deck against us right here. We've got, we've got poor soils, we've got high groundwater, we've got an infrastructure that's clogged, we're in the floodway, which means we can't build this site up. We can't fill it up due to the governing requirements. No fill in the floodway.
Is the outfall still buried, or has it been resurrected?
No, it's still, it's still buried. I mean, we dug it up, but again, for this system to function, that simulated prior channel would have to be dredged essentially and taken out and engineered to see if it could function again. So that is, is the drainage system at this park. So, again, I'm cutting, I'm cut to the chase a little bit here. So we then looked, what can we do here? What would remedy this?
What'd you think? Page four, right? Those recommendations?
Sure, yeah, if, if you want to pull up the report. So there's a couple of things we think need to happen here. So there's a couple of things we think need to happen here, right off the bat. The upper area that's draining into the field, town's infrastructure from the road, the upper fields, parking lot, should be investigated to see if there's another means to get this out to the Brook, get this out. Right now, at least, we said it's not doing anything. It's going to involve permitting, because of the environmental impacts here. Anything that's really being done from a construction standpoint, this site is going to fall under-
You could probably get a, I would think, since it's existing, right? The, the channel's existing, the, what's, you could get a, a permit to do channel maintenance-
Correct.
Which is a pretty easy permit to do.
Correct. We, we think that's, we think that's an option. That's, and that has to happen. We have to react, that's really the second point. We're looking at two things here with this site. One, you've got a lot of network coming into this one location, which is a, almost the lowest lying area that you have here. You have all these environmental constraints. If a separation of some of this was investigated, that would eliminate the amount of water that has to drain out of here. And then we need to reactivate what's currently here. What used to, we'll say, we say an existing channel, it's not an existing channel right now, but our, to the maps of yesteryear, it did exist here. So we need to investigate that option. Now, that's going to free up, hopefully, maybe get a little water moving out of this site, right? Well, let's talk about the baseball field itself. It's still going to have high groundwater, it's still going to have poor soils. So when that rain hits, as you guys know, probably takes a long time for any kind of activity, for games to be played there. It's not an ideal situation. If you wanted a state-of-the-art facility, this is one place you would not put it. Obviously. All right. So, well, we're not talking about a state-of-the-art facility. We're talking about a functionable location where we can be free of some, some stormwater impacts. So, we looked into what would, are there areas possibly to relocate this site, or to reuse the site, or to get to higher ground, really is what we want to do here. So we looked at, although we didn't look into available properties, but just considering this block and lot, it's a big area comprised of a lot of the fields. The upper field, and Tom, maybe if you want to go to the, just the aerial map in general.
The upper field, meaning the softball field?
Just correct. To the right there, the double softball field, at highest, highest sitting elevation you have on this property. So, could there be a swap of usage? That's, it's, there's potential. Now, the size baseball field you have right now for 13 and older is not going to fit smack dab on that site, the upper site, right now, where the double fields are. It's just too big for that. You also have property impacts to the northeast side, so you, you can't, you can't really encroach much farther than what you see up there. However, the area that is now the soccer field, or that berm that goes down there, uh, could be looked at as a potential regrading. Maybe you don't have the same exact dimension field, you wouldn't have the same exact dimension field, but I think you could still get creative, and we could look into this, the possibility of some modified outfield dimensions, maybe some higher fencing. Using, and we'll call it that upper field as the basis for that. A, a field, a Babe Ruth field like this would have to be further away. You'd have to have a little more room for a backstop, but you would have the ability to drain, a, as you would on an ideal facility, a one to two percent slope away from the pitcher's mound. Now, that soccer field would be impacted by any kind of efforts you did on that field, there's no doubt. And there could be some still reuse there, if it's looked into. That could be another way to, say, move it down a little bit, maximize that location.
Move it down, which-
Uh, I would say maybe towards the south, within that square area that is sitting right now. We're sitting right dab in the middle of it.
That's really steep from the upper fields to the soccer field. I mean, that is a big, big drop off.
Yeah, that's a big drop. I think you have to look at-
If home plate has moved up into the right corner, does that add any extra outfield, like, would it fit?
There's high tension wires that go through the park.
Uh, yeah.
Go through where?
High tension wires go through the park.
You see that big line just back end?
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
So there's some, there's some site restraints and there's some site issues that would have to be considered here, but for the locations you have at that piece of property, that's most suitable for a ball field. Now, what happens to soft, softball field, should you do that? The field as, as it is right now suffers most of its water in the outfield areas. You could perhaps, with a shorter field, a shorter fence, reuse or use, we'll call it the driest portion of that field, which is closest to home plate. The areas to the, to the middle of that outfield and back are what's really getting the worst of it right now. So perhaps there could be some use on that end, if you looked at maintaining that portion of the field for either softball or youth baseball, where the larger fences and dimensions are not required. It's one option, something to consider. Another option that we put in here, and probably the, the toughest, would be to-
Number four.
Look at the FEMA study that currently exists for Moore's Brook and the floodplain analysis. This would require new hydraulic analysis. It would require a, a study, if we, if, if the other, if the existing study was looked to be flawed for any reason, then this could be pursued for a letter of map revision. If that was able to be obtained, now you've got a site, if it's technically not in the floodway, there could be some grading performed on this site. However, there's a lot of ifs there. So if you want to elevate, we want to use this field as is right now, in this location, ideally you'd want to elevate this, you want to fill it higher, so you could slope, to follow standard practice. You can't do that right now because of the restrictions imposed in the floodway. The only way to get around that is to look at a new study to assess it. So, really those are your options. It's, you know, if there's other site locations within the town, or other properties that maybe have been earmarked for this, then, you know, those would be recommended to be looked at as well.
So if you did number four, you're still including recommendations of one and two, it becomes a million dollar project?
Well, yeah, well, you still need to, even if you could raise this field, you still have to drain it out somewhere, too.
No, I'm, I'm like thinking here about not raising the field and trying to work with the existing drainage that's there. Getting a general permit to clear the, to clear the channel and establish positive drainage. And then if you line the perimeter of the field in like a gravel trench with a pipe in it, and you did establish positive grade and ran it all the way down to where it could daylight, you could drain the back of the field out and not have to go through the process of lifting the field. It's not like the best case scenario, but right now, I mean, right now, there's nowhere for the water to go, because-
Yeah, no, that's-
It's, I mean, you wouldn't get a new-
I'm fully understanding what you're saying.
You wouldn't get a new field, you'd still have poor soils, you'd still have all this stuff, but we wouldn't have the expense of lifting and moving an entire baseball field.
Yes, but you have, you have high groundwater, you have clay soil, so this, this site is never going to grade, and you can't technically regrade away from the infield right now. So the water, I understand what you're trying to get at. You're still going to have natural terrain issues here, just trying to get this water to run off of the site. Keep in mind that the, the area in the fencing, this is freshwater wetlands, is, even sits a little higher. So just by the nature of freshwater wetlands, the water's not free draining right now. So, I understand what you're saying.
This is like a really bad example of, meaning the current situation with the amount of water that we've been having, it's definitely not.
Yeah, yeah, no, we, it definitely appears to be a little seasonal from the, from the water table we're seeing, the groundwater. However, um, like you said, based on the, the type of subgrade that you have here, the water's never going to percolate into the ground quickly. Yes, if, I think one of our recommendations is we, we need to open up the rear of this site. We have to get some water out of it, no question. That has to happen. But for an ideal baseball facility, I don't think it's going to achieve it, staying at the same elevation it is, without regrading and proper sandy or base soil, other type of soil types.
So, notwithstanding that portion, I just want to understand, we have eight inch pipes flowing into 15 inch pipe, pipes. Where, where are we, is the area that's clogged?
Well, if we go to-
Right there, at the, where it says-
At the very end.
The buried outfall, outfall, right?
Can't drain out, yeah.
So, to Deputy Mayor Flynn's point, if that's cleared, how, and no longer clogged and-
You have to dredge it.
How does that affect the rest? And I mean, in terms of, how, or how would that have affected the results of some of the drainage analysis that you did?
Let's, let me best answer your question. These, the drainage area that's coming down here, part of our, our study didn't dive deep into the numbers of, of the discharges and flows, but we're talking about pretty flat pipes that are coming towards the outfall location. With a flat pipe like this, and the reason why one of our recommendation was to disconnect some of the upper drainage, so we're minimizing the amount of water that needs to get out of here. I think there's still going to be a heavy storm, what you're seeing, and just the fact that this has silted in and filled itself in over the years, tells us that it doesn't want to drain away from this site. It wants to go the other way. The elevations here are conducive to getting to Moore's Brook. It's just too low, so it's naturally filling itself in. It's, it's like a swamp out there, you know? So it's a very tough area to, to relieve itself of drainage, from that standpoint. And Moore's Brook flows towards the east, from, from that screen, from left to right.
Yeah, flows into, um, Hyperhumus, the-
Yes.
Massive bog from here to Lafayette. And the chan, the channel, I mean, it, it's basically, you know, now it's like a natural area, but it's a heavily disturbed, historically heavily disturbed peat bog. So, you know, establishing a channel in there, we wouldn't be the first people to carve a drainage channel through the upper watershed of, of Hyperhumus. It's been, it's historically been probably blown up by dynamite to get all the, I mean, it's, it's, it's been dredged 30 feet deep in certain areas, so it's-
Yeah, the, the Geo, the Geo web map that we included in the report actually doesn't, doesn't show that channel draining to Moore's Brook. It actually shows it going to a pond away from there. So, in the past, you know, that area, but then, as you go more downstream of that Brook, and this is all comprised within a wetland area, they're all kind of interconnected, it's just not making itself directly to the Brook.
I guess what I'm also trying to understand is the clogged, or the clogging issue a result purely of environment, or if we initiated a different sort of maintenance plan, that it could help to alleviate some of the blockage? You know, do we have the right equipment? Do we have, you know, what we need to, should, are we doing what, all that can be done, I guess, to help ourselves?
Yeah, well, I, I think the maintenance is, is really key here, because, and maybe DPW can speak to this, how often and the frequency, you know-
Problem is, when we went out there with your guy, one day we showed you that outfall like this, here's pipe, here's water level. It was put underwater, so.
Yeah, so, I mean-
But it would still flow out if you had, like, head pressure from above, it would still flow out.
In 1993, we dredged all them out. This one right here, this actually is tripped all the way to Moore's Brook.
Uh-huh.
We ought to permit to do that. We cannot go in there and clean that every year, you're not allowed, it's wetting. So in 93, that was dredged out, that stopped the water problem. Since then, it has not been done. Now you have a water problem here, and now it's starting on the lower side of the soccer field also. There used to be only one pond back there, now you have three.
So, how often would, well, how often would the DEP let us do that?
We did it in 93, that was the last time.
We could still do it, I, I know we could still do it with a permit.
Right.
That's what I'm saying.
Last time it was done.
But how often?
But how often can we obtain a permit to do that?
Annually, you can, you can apply for-
As often as it's needed, is my understanding, with this, a maintenance permit, so.
If you do yearly, we could do it. Yeah, you could apply for a durational permit for maintenance to existing features. We just haven't done it because it hasn't been a priority, but you're talking about saving, you know, a field and, and, and not going through a huge engineering project by doing maintenance.
And what's the cost to get that permit and do that work?
Well, in our analysis, um-
Is that, is that in there?
And we, we put some, some ballpark costs in here.
Is that in recommendation number two?
Yes. Yeah, this is not for the permitting, per se, but we're talking about seeing if this can get itself to where it wants to go.
That would not be this, there's no way it would cost that much.
When you look at the estimates, Mayor, you got to look at, you know, we looking at, you know, at some point, we have to decide tonight, but this is food for thought, really, for next year's capital budget.
Mm-huh.
Eliminating the upper drainage area from impacting the field, I think we should do, right? Because we're not just dealing with the field, we're dealing with, there's other conditions at the park that are exacerbating the condition of the field, right, John? So, that's kind of one component, is eliminating that upper drainage area from impacting the field. The second one is more along the lines of what Dan's talking about, Deputy Mayor, about reactivating storm drainage conveyance system. So, you know, to me, one and two would be considered as an option, right? That's about a half a million dollars, you know, give or take, but this is just ballpark, and we haven't talked about maybe looking for grants or other things.
Mm-huh.
Then the third one is relocation, really don't see that as feasible, there's too many- Really don't see that as feasible, there's too many other issues, so you, you solve one problem to create another.
Correct.
So I don't think number three really works, especially with the high tension wires. And then number four is you're just going to go full freight and you're going to do that and one and two, and that becomes the really expensive option of them all, which, you know, I would advise against, but, you know, the council's prerogative, it just seems like a pretty steep, pun intended, expense for Bay Bruce Field to do a million dollars. We're going to do a million dollars, we're going to, we're going to turf the heck out of it and we're going to get naming rights for somebody, but I think your conservative approach would be some version of, of one and two, I think.
Mm-huh. Right, because number two by itself is a Band-Aid. Number one...
Number one will minimize what we're taking down there, so they work together.
Right.
But I think we do need to look at, as part of regular capital, the maintenance, right? Of the, or trying to reduce the clogging, because as Rick said, when that was done, it alleviated the problems. And it's kind of built up again over time.
How often we should be dredging that?
When do we get a call, ballpark cost in there? Would that be annually?
Well, in recommendation number two, it looks like one twenty-five to one seventy-five, but that includes proposed engineering and surveying, I think, that's a...
It wouldn't, it wouldn't cost that much to get a permit to do maintenance, to do ongoing maintenance to drain the area to, so that we have a dry field to begin with. That's, there's no way it would cost anywhere near that.
I'm just being interested to see a hard, a more hard dredge.
I'm not talking, we're not doing construction, we're just, we're just, we're just...
What would it cost to do from the permit to the dredge to finish it? Because then we have to do it, which I'm not doing annually, and then we should probably multiply that out by five, ten, five, seven, ten years and see, do we want to, you know, if it's going to be, like you said, it's probably going to be less than one hundred twenty-five because of the engineering costs.
Nineteen ninety-six, you said?
Nineteen ninety-three. And back in those days when the field, when we did the dredging, we had very little problems with the back field as far as water goes. We haven't dredged since, he said, nineteen ninety-three, so that has been a buildup over the years. Would you have to dredge? If we can get a permit to dredge Moore's Lake, and I know that Josh Gottheimer's office has already said that they will help us get that permit from the DEB?
Moore's Brook.
Moore's Brook.
Moore's Brook, the one that's behind there. He said we could actually, if we can get a permit to dredge that like we used to do, I believe that was done in nineteen ninety-three, it's the last time we dredged the brook. And if we can clean up the brook, I know Tom and I have talked about, and I know they're talking to Nathaniel, about getting crews together to clean out all of the garbage that has been put there and the overgrowth, that we're allowed to do without any permits. But if we want to dredge it, we can have the assistance from Gottheimer's office to get the permit from DEP, and that would solve a lot of the issues with the drainage of the back field, because we never had these issues until all the overgrowth that occurred. I mean, there are sections of Moore's Brook that used to be six feet, seven feet wide that are now two feet wide from all the buildup over all these years. It's been almost twenty-something years since we've dredged it. So if we dredge it every, and then keep up with it...
Right.
I don't think we would have the issue that we're having on the back fields now.
Yeah, I think we're all on board for that, because that means no, no real change, right?
We, we could implement some of these other, these other improvements.
What's the cost, right? What's, what's going to be the cost?
That's something we would have to find out, the permit, and then how much it would cost to dredge.
When you say eliminating the up, like, uh, upper contributing drainage areas, do you mean like from the top softball field, soccer field, like the tier, like separate the tier?
Yeah, no, I, right now, we know the, we call it the upper field. There's a, there's an inlet. Just beyond Moran Street there, that, that pipes into the Moran Street drainage. Um, so we say eliminate it. Yeah, definitely would start right from there from Moran Street. You could look into an alternate means to get that into the brook directly. Let's take that out of the equation.
Like run it the other way down the street?
Run it the other way, not necessarily down the street, but maybe you can dump it towards the bridge or towards that area of Moore's Brook. Again, that would have to be looked closer, we'd have to be looking...
Oh, you'd have to get a flood hazard area permit, right?
It's all in the flood hazard area, that's correct. We'd be looking at freshwater wetlands permits, there, there's a lot of permit in here for this. We'd be looking at an LOI, we'd be looking at, you know, redoing any of that.
But I thought you don't have to get an LOI when you get those, when you, when you just want a general permit for maintenance of existing features. If you wanted to put in a new outfall, I think that's a different story.
Yeah, well, that's...
You're putting in a new outfall. I'm talking about not a new outfall, I'm talking about clearing the old drainage system.
Yeah, yeah, no, if you're talking about disconnecting Moran Street and taking it to a different route into that brook, I think that's what we'd be looking at, we'd be going through the freshwater wetlands there.
Yeah, well, in that case, yeah, you would, but, but the way that I look at it, the exist, what is existing drainage should be a fairly, I mean, it's, of course, it's going to, you're going to have to jump through hoops for a permit, but you're not going to have to get a permit to, to put something new there. So they, they do give you the ability to, to maintain that.
Yes, yes, Doc, we're talking disconnect here, so with, just Moran Street, yeah, the, what's in, the infrastructure that's in the field right now, we got to open that up somehow.
I see, I see what you're saying, get the, the stuff on Moran Street, yeah.
Let's minimize what we're bringing down to this, you know, scenario where if it's not maintained, it's going to plug up, so it's going to need this constant maintenance. Our recommendation is to minimize the amount of water we'll bring into it, if possible. Look at some other means to get it into the brook, so it's not dependent on that location, especially when you're talking about roadway infrastructure.
Any other questions? So, I mean, yes, this is definitely a CIF conversation during budgeting.
Yeah, do you want me to work with John on, you know, short term? What can we do in the immediate? Immediate, meaning, you know, not, you know, this year, next year versus, you know, what kind of planning we can do for capital budget for, you know, some of the more expansive options like number one and number two? Knowing that we have obviously other competing interests financially, which is the reason why we discuss these things, because we're talking six-figure projects, the pool, Bay Bruce, these are not inexpensive propositions.
For sure.
Determinations have to be made about priorities and direction, so this budget is something else.
Yeah, and, and, right, and again, in September, we're going to be having presentations as a result of the engineering work that's being done around the pool, and it's all going to feed into a very robust conversation on planning, on budget planning. But I think in the interim, it sounds like there might be some shorter term, far less expensive next steps that can be made to help at least alleviate...
Yeah.
Some of the i- issue and remediate some of the water that's...
Not an improvement, but more like a relief maintenance.
What about, um, I know there are several tributaries back there that used to feed into Moore's Brook that would have drained part of that back area where, um, we now have the water accumulating where we didn't at one time. Could we do controlled burns to free up those tributaries, because they're all overgrown? Seriously?
Is it allowed in the wetlands?
I don't think...
They're in the wetlands, that's why we would probably, I don't know if we could do that or not, that's what I'm asking.
I don't, I wouldn't condone controlled burns in that area, but...
The DEP question?
Yeah, I was going to say, that's, that's definitely a DEP question.
They do, they do controlled burns in an area where they can get to it, to put it out, and that would, they wouldn't be able to get to that, because it's like a bog.
Yeah, this is, this is a different scenario soil-wise, I think, we have, that's good for, you have steeper areas or areas you want to control before it, um...
I mean, they're doing it in Everglades right now, but, you know, it's a little bit different scenario, for sure.
It's a little close to town. Do you think there's any alternative funding sources, grants, or anything that would be potentially available?
You know, I, I could dive down into that a little further, I know the, the I-Bank, this might be one source of funding means here. I could look into that and give you a better answer. We've used it on some other, it's become very helpful, some of the municipal authorities who can work with it.
It's crazy. Specifically, I think, I might be a L-L for public parks. There might actually, something that might fall through the cracks that way. Something we might get all created with.
So I can check into that for you?
Okay.
Can you give you some feedback?
Clear as mud?
So we'll work on short term and we'll put some numbers together for October and put the capital budget together.
Yeah, I mean, the reality is, right, as you said, we have some other reports and results that we're going to be looking at this fall, and at some point, that's all going to have to be weighed and prioritized.
Yeah.
Any other questions or thoughts?
I mean, I think the report's clear, uh, what the problem is, the maps are nice. I think it's just a matter of like needs and wants and draining the water out of the area, whether you want to put a new field there or anything, period, is, is, in my opinion, the highest priority.
Yeah, but at least, I mean, we have some next step considerations and some approximate price tags as a result, so, I mean, that was the intention really of, of doing the study and the report, is to, to have a comprehensive analysis of what the options are, what the current status of the fields is, um, and some next steps, but I think there are some interim things that we can do.
I wish I had better results, I could provide you on that.
I have a feeling we're not going, that's not going to be the last time we hear that over the next six months.
But it's a challenging site, no doubt.
Anything else we're done?
No, it's all work that needed to be done, so...
All right, John, thanks for coming in.
And I certainly appreciate our guys from GPW and Michelle for being here and for your cooperation and, um, the studies, and then of course, the need to be done as well. Thanks for your input.
Sure, if there's any other questions, Tom, just sort of let me know.
Thank you.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, do we want to have him stay around just for, in case there's questions to the public, or we're good? We'll feed them, feed them, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think that's it for presentations, right? Okay, so we'll move on to council and manager reports. I just have a couple of things. Uh, wanted to thank Chief Richards and dispatch in the police department for the communication that went out, press releases regarding the enhanced nine-one-one system. Certainly, the enhanced system is going to provide for, I think, a better response from our first responders. And as was reported in the articles in the press release, I would really encourage people to go to newtonpolice.org, register, it's going to give the ability for residents to, you know, make any known medical conditions listed on there, you know, if there's children in the house, any other details that you would want first responders to know in the event that you aren't able to verbalize those in, in response or call to nine-one-one. So, um, you know, this is an ongoing effort to, for the municipality to stay on top of technology, but more than that, I think these are examples of ongoing things that we're trying to do to be more responsive and to provide just better service to people or to our residents that might need response when they call nine-one-one. So, um, you know, that enables our dispatchers to be better informed, which then helps whether it's first aid squad, fire department, certainly the police department. So if you don't know about that, you can check out all the additional details and the additional, additional enhancement, enhancements to the program on newtonpolice.org. Today, my family and I participated in a fundraiser at the Scissor Joint. I know that Salon Fiji was also participating in an ongoing effort to support the families that were affected by the accident that we lost Alexi Fayan back in May. So, um, thank you to our newspapers and records for continuing to announce those events so that people can continue to support our families as they, as the kids continue to recover. Um, I was able to see Maria, Maria's mom today, and she's home and recovering, but she still has a long road ahead of her, as do many of the families and all the families that were affected, so. Then this last Wednesday on the nineteenth, Deputy Mayor Flynn and I were at the planning board meeting where we continue to, I think, achieve some good work, and the project that was approved this week is development of a property on Madison, which is a four-bedroom, two-bath, um, single-floor dwelling unit that is going, is going to be a home for mostly residents that have cerebral palsy, but handicapped disabilities, and it's, we, if you recall, the council approved money from our housing trust fund to be used in support of this project, so it's now coming to fruition through development. And, um, the other thing that it's helping with is, because it's, it's a housing project, it represents four, because it's four bedrooms, represents four units of our COA obligation, and so there's some additional benefits. It was nice to see many of the residents from Halsted and the surrounding neighbors to kind of come out and be engaged in the process and ask questions, you know, being, continue to be informed, so I thought it was a good conversation, the planning board meeting, and really an opportunity, I think, for us to educate the planning board members as well as the audience and some residents in the area about the COA obligations, why the housing trust fund exists, the fact that they're going to be, that they're going to have a pilot associated with the project and a few others. So, again, I think a win-win project that's going to be developed on, on what's currently an empty lot. So, um, the planning board continues to, I think, move on some great applications, and I know that there are some that are going to be coming over the next couple of months as well. I think that's all I have for now. Deputy Mayor Flynn, anything for you?
Nothing for me at this time.
Councilwoman Diglio, welcome back.
Thank you very much. The only thing I have to say is I was not here at the last meeting, and I would like to thank all of the chamber members on the committee that worked for Newton Day to make it such a success.
It was a success, and thanks for your work leading up to it, but it was, it was a great day, beautiful weather, lots of accolades, for sure. Anything else, Councilwoman Diglio?
I know we're going to be starting work on the Taste of Newton.
Do you want to advertise a date yet?
Um, not yet.
Okay.
But we're starting our work on that one.
All right. Councilwoman Schaffer?
I just had a couple of things, just thinking about the Liberty Towers has authority. I'm wondering if adding that property, and I don't know if it's already added, but to the Neighbors Helping Neighbors event would help at least in a minor way offset their maintenance costs, you know, get some cleanup done, and plus, you know, residents would love that. I know that they love when we come around, sugar treating, so any little bit of action. Also, I don't know if there's any local colleges and universities that might offer a construction or a management major that a student may benefit from joining a volunteer commission like this one, since it is so heavily involved and volunteer basis, that you might want to find somebody who may specifically benefit from the experience, which would, you know, better secure someone who's actively involved and committed to it.
Good idea.
I wasn't here at the last meeting either, so I didn't get to talk about Newton Day, but it was awesome. As someone who grew up in the area and attended dozens and dozens of different town events, you know, all the Kitten and Sendings districts every year, it was definitely the best town day I've ever been to, and I think that after seeing how much unused space was at Memory Park, that we may want to start thinking about moving the entire event to Memory Park, which would kind of better secure attendance numbers, because, you know, there's a lot of things that were at Memory Park that families who may have gone to the Spring Street portion never even knew happened. You know, there's these immense bouncy castles, but there are a ton of young families on Spring Street, you know? I have two toddlers, I know I'm not going to really get two outings in a single day out of them, so it might be beneficial to go to the, the park and use all that, that great open space we had. So just something to think about to help relieve traffic and, you know, not simplify the planning and organization portion. And the last thing is just that, the new boardwalk that's located off Sparta Avenue, you know, the tri-state rental, I've been there a few times with my kids, and it's been awesome for nature walks and, you know, playing the Billy Goats Gruff on there. I think it's a really cool addition, I'm excited about that. And finally, is, we have an EDC meeting coming up on July ninth, where we'll be discussing and expanding on some ideas based on a fantastic resource Councilman Dixon gave us for Main Street ideas that he got from the Main Street New Jersey Regional Workshop, so excited to go over that, because it was quite a length of... to go over that, because it was quite a length of, so, deliver it to everybody, forward it to him, and give him, you know, a month or so to process, so, looking forward to it.
Councilman Dixon?
All right, the Newton Board of Ed had their meeting on June 11th. A representative from the Walker Valley watershed was at the Board of Ed meeting and was saying that they were trying to reach out to the town, looking for some DPW assistance with digging out the area, they're going to be putting the rain garden in at Halsted. I don't know if you guys have gotten to a question, I swear to my heart, good. And also, I passed along some information that I received from the Cody Fund, that they provide free mental health training for the school district, paraprofessional support staff, stuff like that, to help them recognize mental health issues, so the board had some interest in that, and we will continue to work together to try to arrange that. And lastly, Newton Roller Hockey has been having some issues with the sport court flooring that was installed. When it gets hot-
Is that relatively new?
Yeah.
Yeah, brand new.
That was just last year.
We resurfaced.
Yes. The sport court down, I know it was like a split, I think, where we spent like $50,000 and they put in the rest towards it. Anyway, when it gets hot, the floor starts to bulge up in spots. At the end of the spring season, actually, had to be delayed two weeks for the playoff and championship games as a result. The league has been in contact with the company that came out and did it, but I didn't know if we, as a town, also wanted to reach out to the company and just talk to them and make sure what's going on, since we did make such a large investment in that.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to know if there was a manufacturer's defect, an insulation issue, or-
Right, yeah.
Is it water getting leaked, or?
No, it just seems like it's, you know, when it gets hot, it expands.
Yeah.
And then it just kind of, there's nowhere for it to go, so it just kind of-
So you can't escape, because it's not a flat surface.
Yeah, and you lose the flat surface, and, you know, you're falling.
Anything else?
No, that's all.
Mr. Russo?
Echo the mayor sentiments on the enhanced 911. Appreciate the coverage in the Herald and Tap, so everyone should take advantage of that service if they're so inclined, really great. Also, kudos to our favorite police chief, Mike Richards, he's being honored by the Police Assisted Addiction Recovery Initiative with a leadership award this Wednesday. Strong leadership since the inception of CLEAR, this is a note that Becky had sent out, Carlson, you know, it was made CLEAR successful in the county, and Parry was founded in June of 2015, and that's what became the impetus for the first CLEAR meeting in November 2015, which became active in July 2016, and the chief has been instrumental in the success of CLEAR, and also he came up with the CLEAR name itself, so kudos to Mike for that, but that's a recognition, anniversary celebration award ceremony Wednesday in Gloucester, Massachusetts. Parry was founded in June 2015, reinvented the way law enforcement agencies address addiction in their communities by treating it as a treatable disease rather than a crime. There's a national movement of nearly 500 law enforcement agencies creating access points to treatment and recovery, so this is their fourth annual leadership awards. We have individuals from Boston Police Department, Chelsea Police Department, Gloucester, Newton, one from Maryland, several elected officials, the mayor of Boston, so quite an interesting array of people that are involved in this initiative that are receiving awards, and it's cool that the chief from Newton, New Jersey, will be recognized in Massachusetts, so that's cool, so thank you to Mike for his hard work.
Make sure you get some good photo.
Yeah, definitely, yeah, no, it's well deserved. Our next council meeting is Monday, July 8th, so make sure that's on your calendars. We will be closed for Independence Day, July 4th and July 5th, and so everyone have a happy 4th, and also make sure you check out signups for the transportation from Newton to Hackettstown for the pool, we're up and running, so says Michelle.
I was just going to ask you how that's, how that's going.
Sign up genius, so, did we get any takers yet, or?
Uh, not yet.
Not yet, all right. All right, so login if you want to get your spot on the bus, and that's it, thank you.
And Thursday, I was just looking for the email that I forwarded to everybody, is it this Thursday?
ADP, or what?
The Sussex County Economic Development Partnership, the town of Newton's been nominated, and actually, I think we did a count, 10 or 11?
A dozen Newtons.
Or 12?
Eight main organizations.
Right, Newton organizations, businesses, people have been nominated, so Newton's definitely having a great showing, so best of luck to all the nominees, and we hope to bring home some hardware. All right, any other council manager reports or comments at this time?
Just a question.
Yep.
I saw in the notes that we're not having a meeting on July 22nd, it's canceled.
We're going to talk about that, but not tonight, yeah, the next meeting.
Thank you.
We can just have it canceled.
Yeah, many years we've gone back and forth, two meetings July, one meeting in July, two meetings, but sometimes it's because we've had reorg and then another, or not, but, so we need to, we do, we need to revisit that.
We have one in August, right?
Yeah.
All right, so let's move on to ordinances. We have second reading and public hearing on ordinance 2019-5. This is an ordinance admitting section 320.2 and 320.3 of the code of the town of Newton. So I need a motion to open that hearing to the public?
Make a motion to open the hearing to the public.
I second the motion.
I have a motion to open the hearing by Councilman Dixon, a second by Councilwoman Diglio, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public? Okay.
Seeing, seeing nobody coming forward, I'll offer a motion to close that portion of the hearing.
I have a motion to close the hearing by Deputy Mayor Flynn, and a second by Councilwoman Schlafer, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion to act?
Make a motion to act on ordinance 2019-5.
I'll second that motion.
All right, I have a motion to move and act on ordinance 2019-5 by Councilman Dixon, and a second by Councilwoman Diglio, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Schlafer?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois?
Yes. All right, we have ordinance 2019-6. This is an ordinance adopting a new chapter, 241, called Soil Importation and Grading to the Codebook of Town of Newton in section 100-24.0 regarding soil importation and grading fees. I noticed the town of Newton wasn't listed in the Herald article, talking about all the towns that were working on this, but I'm not going to make a big deal about it, Bruce, just saying. No, but I do, in advance of this, in advance, I do want to thank Tom and the team, Ursula, I know this has been in works for many, many months, looking at how soil importation and grading could affect not only our town, but our town outs uniquely sized and the parcels that we have, and there was a lot of, I think, thorough work done on this ordinance, so I'll take a motion to open it to the public.
So moved?
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Flynn, and a second by Councilwoman Diglio to open the hearing to the public. Anybody wishing to speak on this ordinance?
Seeing no one, I'll make a motion to close the hearing to the public, second.
I have a motion to close the hearing by Councilman Dixon, and a second by Deputy Mayor Flynn, all in favor?
Aye.
Lauren, did I do an all in favor on the first to open? Okay, I don't think I did, okay, roll call, yeah. All right, so, do I have a motion to act?
I'll make a motion to act on ordinance 2019-6.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Councilwoman Diglio, and a second by Councilman Dixon to act on ordinance 2019-6, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Schlafer?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois?
Yes. All right, so coming back under old business, we have ordinance 2019-B. This is an ordinance revising Article 1 of Chapter 57, Animals, and Chapter 320, Zoning of the Code of the Town of Newton Regarding Animals. This is a discussion item, I think you'll refer to page 17 of your council packet, you have the revised draft ordinance, page 17 specifically, I believe, is a section that was added in after our discussion two council meetings ago, and so Ursula, could you maybe just, do, you know, start the discussion on what the changes from the last version were, and kind of where that came from, train of thought, what we're considering?
So after our last discussion, I looked at both Faquonic and Borden Town, was one of the samples that was suggested by a member of the public.
Okay.
And what we did was basically create a new section, Standards for Keeping Chickens. The other minor changes were under the definitions of domestic animals, we added the definition of chickens, and also under that 100 pounds, we said, and other animals. So under the standards for keeping chickens, and remember, Chapter 57 deals with domestic animals, and we still have under Section 320, the farm, the larger, the five acres and larger, so that still exists. So under these keeping of chickens, exempting those farm ones, what we set forth were a maximum of five female chickens. I learned a definition of cockerels, so we'll say no roosters or cockerels, which are young roosters. Fully enclosed shelters, so a coop and a run, and then requirements as far as rear yard and side yard, so the rear yard requirement is that the shelters and the runs will be only in the rear yard, and then five foot if there's a fence, which I thought was a good idea, and then 10 foot if there's not a fence, so there's a little bit more of a buffer, 25 feet from a dwelling, so you've got different standards in there to be sure you have sufficient distances. The shelter size is limited to 100 square feet, only one shelter, and then with the run, a maximum of 150 square feet, and then a height of six feet for the shelter itself. There's also a requirement here that the shelter be maintained in a clean condition, prohibiting slaughtering, and then as far as manure, waste, food, anything that could be a nuisance at all, it has to be kept in a tight container, and a setback, again, of 10 feet from any lot line and 25 feet from a residential dwelling. I did speak to Kathy, our zoning officer, and she actually spoke to the Department of Health also, and she thought this would be helpful and lead in the right direction and clarify what we need clarified, if this is the direction you wish to go.
What do you mean, no slaughtering?
In public view.
In public view.
I saw it in some sample ordinances and figured that'll be, again, to clarify, that's not what we're looking for in the town, it makes it easy for Kathy to enforce, more than anything.
So she didn't feel that there was anything missing, or any questions that were left unanswered?
She initially had some questions about the setbacks, but again, that Section 320 deals with larger, so that 200 square feet remains for those larger properties-
Right.
-but not for properties that have five or less female chickens only, so she's good with it now.
Right, because we're really, and I think it's clear, important to differentiate, we're talking about two different parts of our zoning ordinances.
This is a small, small operation on a residential property versus a large farmland, right?
So I recall from our last meeting, we had discussions about definition of domestic animals, we had conversations about if we were to allow chickens, I think Councilwoman Schlafer and Councilwoman Dixon, or Diglio, were questioning, okay, if we were to allow them, what limitations might be, what could we look at in terms of property setbacks, what would numbers look like, acceptable animals, limiting the definition, perhaps not including, or being restrictive in the definition so that there wasn't any interpretation like Guinea, what was Guinea fowl, or somebody was concerned about another type of fowl, right?
Turkeys.
So, does this satisfy some of the questions?
I, yeah, I had previously written down some concerns, but I'm very happy with the way I wrote it.
I only have one question, okay. Cats, under animals running at large, how do you control cats that come and go, literally? Because according to this, it says they have to be regularly housed on the property or in the possession, they're not supposed to be running around, but-
We're not talking about feral cats, right?
I'm talking about both feral and house cats, because a lot of people have house cats that they let in and out. Mine, no, mine stay in the house, they don't like outside, but I know a lot of people that have cats that literally come and go.
So I recall that we got in a conversation about feral cats, and by definition, they're not domestic, domestically kept animals, despite the fact that we have people that are feeding our feral cat populations, so I don't know that we needed really to address the feral cat population, I think it was the conclusion in our last discussion that we did not need to necessarily address feral cats in this-
Correct.
-conversation and this definition of domestic animals, right?
I agree, yes.
But any comment on Councilwoman Diglio's-
My dad's a veterinarian, so he would tell me that you do want to encourage people, even with cats, to keep them within their property, right, for disease, for reproduction, so we don't have more feral cats, so it's an enforcement issue, of course, but I think it's, it is important to have it in here and include all domestic animals we don't want running at large.
And I think the other question that Councilwoman Diglio had was the 100-pound limit, that we have certainly dogs in the municipality licensed or otherwise that are more than 100 pounds.
I agree with that, too, I was thinking maybe go to, because there's several breeds that are well over 100, so, I mean, I was thinking that.
But I think the way it's worded excludes that.
Yeah.
Yeah, right?
Other animals.
No, that's why I asked the question, did that satisfy the question that I think Councilwoman Diglio had about the 100-pound?
Yeah, and I think the way it's written, it's clear that that's, that dogs are separate from that last bench.
Right.
What about public?
So it says any animal, and then it says excluding more than 100 pounds, meaning those other animals that are not allowed. Okay.
We have to leave some.
No, I know, but those were like half a dozen major questions that we had left open, I wanted to make sure everybody's happy, everybody's satisfied. Okay, so if we step-
I think this is a, I just want to point out that this is a, I mean, I'm happy that we're going in this direction, this is a significant ordinance change, though, I mean, this is, we're doing something that councils haven't touched in how many decades?
Several.
Several.
1751, right?
We're talking about it like this.
Many decades.
We're making a substantial change here, and, you know, I just want to, you know, I'm okay with it, I'm just checking.
And I wanted to, I wanted to bring that, I wanted to make sure that everybody's questions were satisfied on if we were going to be allowing, but then I wanted to stick a step back and say, you're absolutely right, Deputy Mayor Flynn, no, 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 you're fine, you're absolutely right, though, because I think that many of the questions to redefine the ordinance to allow were coming from Councilwoman Diglio and Councilwoman Schlafer, and yet I know Councilman Dixon and Deputy Mayor Flynn had some questions about whether we were going to do this or not, right, and how do we kind of come to that decision? If we were to look at other ordinances, what would that look like, was there a compromise, right? So I wanted to make sure that we had questions answered, and the ordinance as written was acceptable to answer those questions, but then come back and say, yes, this is a departure and this is a change.
You will now be allowed to have chickens in the town of Newton, five of them, female.
Increasing personal freedoms, it's pretty awesome.
Are we going to be registering them, or is this just-
No registrations, nothing.
You want to add an enforcement layer, are you sure it's female, and-
Well, I've just, I was just asking. Councilman Dixon will come.
Thank you.
What are you doing?
Wait, we have issue enough, being, people coming forward and licensing the animals that are supposed to be licensed, let's, let's get that on equal, equal playing field, I mean, right?
Let's leave it at that.
Exactly, so.
Much appreciated.
Mr. Russo, additional comments?
Yeah, I mean, as strong as I think the ordinances, and I'm happy with my effort and Ursula, and the rest of the chicken committee, I would like to hear from the public specifically on this.
Yeah, so we do this oftentimes in a planning board meeting, I know that we have official open public portion later on, but-
See if we can do it now.
Exactly.
Before we do our chicken dance here that we got victory, I want to make sure we're copacetic.
Okay, so we're going to depart a little bit from the agenda, we're going to open to the public specifically on the amended domestic animal ordinance, I'm not calling it the chicken ordinance. Did you hear that, Danielle, Bruce? The amended domestic animal. Any, no, well, I mean, Councilman Dixon just did ask about that, I'm not sure anybody heard that about the pigs, but any comments from the public, please?
Teresa Marquina, 7 Liberty Street. I guess if I didn't stand up, you guys would have been like, what the heck, why are you here? I just want to say thank you so much for looking into this, you are, you guys are still invited to come on over and take a look at the chickens whenever you get a chance. My girls are going to be ecstatic that we get to keep our lovely hens, and, yeah, I think that this was, this was great. I think that, you know, over the couple of weeks, I've heard all these different stories about, you know, someone's neighbor being a cop and having, you know, bringing her eggs, and I'm like, well, it's a cop and he has chickens, and, you know, having a smaller yard than that, you know, than what was allowed. And so I know that there's a lot of people that have peacefully had chickens in their backyard, that, you know, it doesn't interrupt anybody else's lives, so I appreciate that. I mean, I know we did have the rooster, because when you're- I mean, I know we did have the rooster, because when you're, my husband does like a test when they're young and pick them up or something, and if they flap around, they're, they're men, and if they don't, then they're girls, and so he, you know.
That is telling in and of itself right there, but, go ahead.
He had an 80% accuracy rate that time, and so we did have some roosters that, that came, and then it's like, well, what do we do with these roosters now, you know? And so we have taken care of them. You know, some went off to friends' woods and others are living at friends' houses. And so, but we did really want to keep our hens. We, I think that this is, this is great. It allows you guys to kind of come in and if people are not treating their animals right, or if they're not keeping things, you know, in a good condition, it allows the town to step in and say, hey, this isn't, you know, you got to get these birds out of here, because you're just not following the protocol. So I, I think it was, I think it's great. I think it's great for you guys. It gives you a little bit of a foot in where you can actually do something for people that aren't taking care of their animals, and then it allows us as, you know, cool city dwellers to be able to have our chickens and our eggs and all of that. So thank you.
Any other comments about this ordinance? Okay, we'll close that public portion.
Do you have any changes or anything? Otherwise, we'll put it on for introduction.
No, and again, to your point, Tom, right, this is a draft, right? So we still have to create a final, put it on for introduction, have the public hearing, second reading, all that kind of stuff, too. So that will allow for anybody else that wants to make a comment to do so in a public way.
All right, so I'll pay for intro.
I have no changes? No?
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for doing the background and taking that last discussion and doing the additional work, Ursula and Tom. Okay, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the Town Council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Tom, can you go over the consent, please?
Yeah, real quick, renewal of the animal control agreement with the PACOM for Animal Control and Power Services. We have Chapter 159, communities, insertion into the budget, micron screen purchase from Morris Lake. We have R and J controls the required exposure contract, surplus property resolution. We have renewal of plenary retail consumption liquor licenses and bills of back.
Any questions on any of the resolutions, any that need to be discussed further or pulled off consent? No, okay, can I have a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion to move the consent agenda by Councilman Schlaffer, a second by Councilman Dixon. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Schlaffer?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois?
Yes. All right, any other discussion items tonight? Okay, we'll reopen the meeting to the public. Anyone wishing to make any comments on anything? Feel free to come forward.
Give me anything at all.
Anything you would like.
Anything you want.
Come on up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please.
Robert Boyle, I'm here, I'm half of Planet Networks. Our address is Fort Park Place, Newton. I just wanted to just give the council an opportunity, if you have any questions. Me, we put in a, so they, we've been going back and forth with Ursula and with lots of other towns. We're providing, we are building a high-speed fiber network. We already have a high-speed fiber network throughout Sussex County. We're building out two individual houses and businesses now. We've been doing that for a couple of years now. We're actually going to start building down multiple streets. We already have service on Spring Street. We've got service in a couple of other places, but we're already using existing, existing rights that other companies have for the pull-throughs. So what we're doing now is we're actually putting our own fiber on different poles in different towns, all of North Village in Sparta. Everyone over there can get fiber to the home, gigabit service for $109 a month. I mean, completely different than anything you guys have available now through the phone company or the cable company. One of the things we did was we, we sent these notices out to the towns and like, so we're working through the legal aspects of it, but it's a requirement that New Jersey state law requires that you approve our, I think it's kind of a formality. So I just wanted to ask if anyone has any questions about what it was. One of the things that we were going back and forth, those of you guys came back to us and said, we want to know which poles you're going to be on. We're not, so the FCC and federal government basically said, we, we aren't required to tell you anything about what we're doing. There's no need for us to justify what we're doing. We're happy to share any information you want. We're happy to tell you anything, but basically it's a blanket agreement that we have an act, we have a right to access the right-of-ways, and then once we have access to that right-of-way, we plan to build out, and we'll essentially be on every pole on every street in the town over the next few years, so. And hopefully we'll get there in the next 12 to 14 months, so.
So first of all, Mr. Boyle, welcome back to the Town of Newton.
Thank you. Good to be back.
An early, early success story prior to Thor Labs and others. I think you were one of the first, what I'll call, tech businesses to successfully launch off of Spring Street and impact municipalities and areas far wider than Newton, so we welcome you back.
Don't disdill our avenue. We started on Diller Avenue.
True, true, true.
What business is that?
Moved to Spring Street afterwards, but.
Yeah, that's right, I forgot about Diller Avenue, yeah. And then you were back in New Hampshire and then a little way from home for a little while, then back now, right? So, welcome. So it's my understanding also that Mr. Hoffman over at Newton High School and a few others obviously are in big support, Congressman Gottheimer and others that have been talking about high-speed fiber and broadband and the county being a little bit behind in the times and how that's impacted business, particularly clean technologies and data-driven technologies, et cetera. So I think it's, everything's in motion. You and the team and others have sent the materials over to Tom and to Ursula and to our engineers, because basically, as Mr. Boyle stated, they're going to need access to right-of-way and easement, obviously, properties in town. So I think the next steps is that Tom and Ursula, next steps include Tom and Ursula kind of working on some of that, some of those details, just, I think, so that we know impact of right-of-ways and what is all going to be done, right? So we have a full comprehension.
So right now it's in engineering, actually. Harold Pella reviewed it and asked some questions, like you were saying, about the location, just to make sure who owns the property, where is it? So Harold set for some engineering requirements, so that's what we're working on now.
Okay, and that, which is standard operating procedure when any entity wants access to, to right-of-ways and easements and town-owned properties.
But more particularly, don't you have to get an easement from who owns the poles, which is JCP and L?
So there's, there's what's called a joint use agreement, which is basically, some of the poles are owned by JCP and L and some of them are owned by CenturyLink here, and then in other areas, some of them are owned by Sussex Rural and some are owned by, you know, Warwick Valley, some are owned by Verizon, depends on where you are. But typically, the power company and the, and the phone company put in about 50% of the poles, like each of them puts in 50%, and they kind of have an agreement that says, whatever, if you put in more than we do, then we'll pay you some amount, and they settle up every year, basically. So what we're going to be, we already have an agreement, so we are, we are a CLAC, which is a competitive local exchange carrier, so we're a phone company. We have, we've been granted that right by the, by the State of New Jersey Board of Public Utilities. We are also, as a CLAC, the FCC basically says, and especially in, and you can look this up if you, if you search for 6409, search for 6409, and then right-of-way, you'll see there's, there's a shot clock that started the day I sent your letter, and so you have 60 days to approve it. You can't, there, there aren't any, we're not building any new poles, we're not putting any new conduits in. Anything we do with that will come back to you for an engineering approval and to make sure that you're okay with that and the town engineer is okay with that. What we're asking for right now is just a blanket approval, which will give us the ability to go on existing poles and exist, in the existing right-of-ways. So, and it's, like I said, it's really a formality. There's three things that you can require of us to grant that approval. One is that we have insurance for anyone working in the right-of-way, which we do, and we can provide proof of insurance. We'll add Newton as an additional insured. The other thing that you can require is that if we disturb anything, we destroy the grass or we damage something, that we can restore it back to the way it was. And then the, the third thing is any reasonable fees for attorneys reviewing whatever the proposed motion or ordinance or however you want to, you know, approve. The vague, State of New Jersey is kind of vague. They just say, we'll request and the town shall issue, you know, access to the right-of-way. So, but like I said, we're working that out with, with the team, but I just wanted to give you guys the opportunity to see if anyone has any questions about what that entails or what it looks like, or if there are any.
I have another general question, maybe you could, you sound like you're expert in this area to answer it. How come this area has such poor internet service for such a high price? Is it, was there, was there something that restricted the lack of competition that was established by some board in this, in this county years ago?
So, yeah, there are a lot of misconceptions about that. People say, oh, CenturyLink has a 100-year exclusive contract or whatever, and so there isn't really any reason other than the simple economics of it. If you're deploying, if we're deploying fiber in Morristown, we're getting a lot more dense, higher density per, you know, mile we travel down the road. If we're in Newark or Caldwell or just, those other areas are higher density. Newton happens to be a high-density area, but it's in the middle of very low-density areas. CenturyLink is primarily in Ohio, and CenturyLink is the local phone company, for anyone who doesn't know. They are, they're primarily in Ohio, Kansas, Florida. They have some operations out in West Coast, I think in Oregon. So this is a kind of a weird, you know, redheaded stepchild for them. This is not their primary market, this is not their, where they want to be, this is not where they would, they're investing any of the money.
Prior customer, I realize.
Okay, so, so, and I, I don't speak for, I don't speak for CenturyLink, I've just been a customer over the years and, and I know people who work there and, you know, the local guys are great guys, but they're just, you know, this is not a priority for them. And then Service Electric is kind of the same thing. They don't really have any competition from CenturyLink, so they don't really need to upgrade their cable plant. Now they're starting to, because we started, and we have a little advertisement that we run and we hand out postcards to people in areas where we serve, and it basically shows their pricing and their speed, and then ours is like, you know, 10 times as fast for less money. And so when we, when, when in areas where we've done that, they've started upgrading their cable plant, and they're now offering 150 mags as their, as their fastest speed instead of 105. And so competition is spurring the, even if someone doesn't use us, they'll benefit from us being in town, because the competition is waking up and realizing they're going to lose all their customers. So North Village, nobody signed up for cable yet. Every, in every single house that's been built there, everyone uses us. So, and the two people who didn't know about, that we offered service, canceled their cable and went with us anyway, so. So there's no, other than the simple low-density, and we actually provided DSL, the DSL that the phone company provides now, we provided in Newton in 1997, or, yeah, 1997. So 20 years ago, we provided the same service as they provide today. But what happened was, we used to buy phone lines from the phone company, and the phone company was able to do that at a much lower, they controlled the costs, right? So they basically started raising our rates and then offering retail rates that were lower, and kind of drove us out of that business. So we basically became, we focused on our cloud business, which is where we, what we did for the next 20 years, and we just kind of stopped providing consumer DSL and dial-up and everything, just because it wasn't, we couldn't offer it at a price that was, our wholesale cost was twice what their retail price was. So it didn't make sense for us to do that anymore. And so because of that lack of competition, they really haven't, since they drove us out of the market, they really haven't done anything else. Now, this is different, because we control 100% of our, you know, we're 100% in control. We put the fiber on the poles, we run it back to our network, we have a nationwide IP backbone, so we're not reliant on the phone company or the cable company for anything. So if that helps to answer the question, so. And I want to invest in Newton, because I like Newton. Newton's where we got our start and we want to do good things for the community, and our, our customers here, who, we've had a number of customers here, we've been doing wireless here for a few years, this had made a world of difference for them, because a lot of them were planning on moving out of Newton, because they couldn't operate here, because the speeds were too low.
Can't operate a home business that needs substantial data.
Yeah, so, but we've been offering 400, 500 megabits symmetrical here for three years from wireless, and we've been doing it for about two years via fiber, but we're only doing it in certain pockets. So if you're a Marion Gateway, you can get gigabit fiber today. If you're at, if you're at 350 Sparta Avenue or 270 Sparta Avenue, we have a lot of different buildings that we've built out, primarily multi-tenant, but now we're looking to expand and just go down the street and hit everybody, so. Does that answer the question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, it was not, I was having like a water cooler conversation with colleagues in Morris County, and we were talking about how much we paid in internet, and I was like, Lord, I couldn't, I couldn't believe.
Any other public comments, questions? Okay, we'll close that portion of the meeting. Additional councilor manager comments?